Dr. Pat Lepore, welcome. And let's ask Lou to do the roll call and announcement of the Open Public Meetings Act.
County Commissioners Duffy, Gallo, James, Lazar, Deputy Director Bartlett, and Director Lepore. And please note for the record, Director Lepore is absent today. Okay. Announcement of the Open Public Meetings Law.
Ladies and gentlemen, notice requirement of the Open Public Meetings Law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including the annual notice adopted a reorganization meeting and filed with the county clerk, posted in administration building, mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law.
Thank you very much, Lou. Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance, followed by a special welcome.
Please show me the pleasure allegiance.
Pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move in the silence. I'm gonna call the pipes and drums in. Attention.
Good evening, everyone. I need a microphone. Welcome to St. Patty's Day celebration, State County Commissioners. And I have distinct pleasure to introduce Father Ryan Skind to the invocation. Ryan, Father, do you need a microphone?
Not really.
I'm so glad that you moved this podium. I was trying to think of where I would go. Okay. God of goodness, as we continue on this journey through life, let us be honest with ourselves. Hear our prayers. As I look into my heart and soul, noticing the times we turn away from you, guide us as we humbly seek to repent and return to your love. May humility guide our efforts to be reconciled with you and live forever in your abundant grace. Transform us all. O heavenly Father, give us the strength to commit ourselves to grow closer to you. Give our commissioners hearts of compassion and an awareness of the needs of their constituents, especially the poor, the needy, the downtrodden, those who are alone and neglected. Let us walk with you this day and every day forward. Amen.
Thanks, Father. Yep, I'm gonna dismiss the band. Thank you for being here. They don't get paid for this. They donate their time. Of course, they'll be at Duffy's Tavern throughout the weekend. That's it. First to River Street. Thank you again. Please be seated. I'm gonna pull this back, and we're gonna have, it's on, right? We're gonna have Irish step dancers. They're from Ridgewood. The name of the company is Ridgewood Irish Step Dancers, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong. They will also be performing at Duffy's Tavern in the corner, First to River Street, at the weekend. We'll have all kinds of corned beef. And before you leave, of course, take some soda bread home. One, not two. So we're gonna ask the step dancers. Let me make sure you got enough room here.
Excellent.
Yep.
Yeah, I've been known to dance like that. Well, now, we have a special treat. We have someone in Tom Gibbon, who's always a friend of ours. And it's a real treat to have him here. You're up. Come on, let's go three minutes. And I'll see you next year. Good man, Tom. Thank you for being here. Thanks. The afternoon. It's glad to have an opportunity to come to this annual celebration of the Passaic County Board of Commissioners. Bishop, you know, there's 21 counties in New Jersey, but I dare say there's no county like Passaic County in terms of its diversity and so many different racial and ethnic groups. And I think that kind of adds to the character and vitality of the whole community and the county and where people can get to know each other's heritage and culture. And of course, today, we're celebrating the Irish Bishop Sweeney. He has deep Irish roots. He's a Mayo man. That's a county in the west of Ireland. And I think you're the chaplain of the Mayo Society in New York. So that's double duty, as far as that's concerned. My father came from a county called Roscommon, which is right adjacent to Mayo in the west of Ireland. He came here basically as an immigrant teenager, just 18 years of age. Came on the 3rd of January in 1927. I dare say he probably left a few days after Christmas and never saw his mother again because when she died in 1944, they simply either didn't have the time or, in most cases, the money to go back home, so to speak, you know, to her wake and funeral. But I know he always felt a great attachment to his mother because his father had died when he was just nine or 10 years of age. But the Irish have contributed their share to not only Passaic County in New Jersey, but all across America, in every walk of life, business, labor, education, government, professionally, whether it's doctors, or attorneys, or accountants, you name the field of endeavor. And of course, in the tavern and restaurant business, we're very well represented. I say that Terry Duffy might think you dispense a lot of spirits, Bishop Sweeney, but Terry Duffy is the largest dispenser of spirits in downtown Patterson. And to get all, Murphy's up in total. But I know that that's like your half-brother. But seriously, between Murphy and Duffy, they do their share about providing for dispensing of spirits and keeping the traditional eye. So we're all here within a few days of St. Patrick's Day. And the big parade, of course, will be held this Friday up Fifth Avenue, New York. And that parade, believe it or not, predates the founding of America. It goes back to 1762. So you do the math on that. I think this year will be the 262nd parade. So that's really a tribute to the steadfastness of the Irish community. And everybody simply is Irish on St. Patrick's Day. And we'll all be out there, police officers, members of the fire department, armed services, and schools, and nurses, and firemen, really, you know, wake up New York after, you know, the winter, so to speak, and be like the harbinger of spring. So it's good to see this celebration, you know, continue on. And I know that Terry Duffy, Commissioner Duffy, takes a great deal of personal interest in this and together with the other freeholders, if they're not Irish, or part Irish, and if they're lucky enough to be Irish, they're lucky enough, I guess you'd wanna say. But Terry wants me to sing a song. My voice isn't as, because it should be, because of all this shouting, you know, there's a lot of parades in New Jersey. I think off the top of my head, when I started thinking about it, there's about 25 parades that stretch from Atlantic County to Bergen County. So that's a lot of parades, a lot of walking, but a lot of enthusiasm. And even if the weather's cold, or windy, or damp, all the parades held up to date have been good and have a good showing out and have been helpful to their respective communities. I'll sing a song, try to get the words out. It's entitled "A Wild Colonial Boy." Let me see if I can get it all the way through. There was a wild colonial boy. Jack Duggan was his name. He was born and reared in Ireland, in a place called Castle Main. He was his father's only son, his mother's pride and joy. And dearly did his parents love the wild colonial boy. At the early age of 16 years, he left his native home. And to Australia's sunny shores, he was inclined to roam. He robbed the rich to help the poor. He stabbed James McAvoy. A turn or two, Australia was the wild colonial boy. One morning on the prairie, as Jackie rode along, he was listening to the mockingbird singing a cheerful song. Outjumped three troopers, brave and strong, Kelly Davis and Fitzroy. And they all set out to capture him, the wild colonial boy. Surrender now, Jack Duggan, 'cause you see, you're three, two, one. Surrender in the Queen's high name, for you are a plundering son. Jack drew two pistols from his side and proudly waved them high. "I'll fight, but not surrender," cried the wild colonial boy. Then turning round to Davis, he received a fatal wound. A bullet pierced his proud young heart from the pistol of Fitzroy. And that is how they captured him, the wild colonial boy. Thank you. I'll put it with the rest of them. So he will not be performing at Duffy's Tavern. He's got some other engagements, Corner First and River Street, Patterson. But I have to mention that I have, we have another bar up in Wannacoo called The Knot, which will be open in the step dancers, running right, step dancers can be up by us over there. So that being said, it's my distinct honor and pleasure to, as our Irishman of the year, to pick out, after a long background check, he finally got through it, Bishop Kevin Sweeney, who's the bishop of our diocese here in Patterson. And I'm thrilled to have you here, Bishop. Will this be time off my purgatory at all, anything like that? So it's gonna be a long time. Anybody else? Sorry if I'd have you up here, Bishop. That's a suspicion. So that being said, once again, it's a pleasure from the Commissioners to have Bishop Sweeney here. And let me read this bio. Whereas in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional Irish-Americans over the years, Passaic County Commissioners of the County Passaic deemed it fitting and appropriate this time to recognize Bishop Kevin Sweeney during its Irish-American Heritage Celebration. Whereas Bishop Kevin Sweeney is a native of Queens, New York, and grew up at St. Luke's Parish in Whitestone. And whereas Bishop Sweeney attended Cathedral Prep from 1984 to 88, at the graduation, he entered Cardinal Seminary House of Formation in Douglistown and studied at St. John's University, receiving a BA in Philosophy in 1992. Whereas Bishop Kevin Sweeney entered the Seminary of the Metta Conception in Huntington and received an M.D., M Division in Theology. And during his time, he spent a pastoral year at St. Augustus in Brooklyn. And whereas Bishop Kevin Sweeney, on June 20th, 1997, was ordained a priest of the Diocese of Brooklyn by Bishop Thomas Daley, his first assignment as parochial vicar was in the parish of St. Nicholas of Tolentine in Jamaica from 97 to 2003. And that was then assigned to our Lady of Sorrows in Cornea. Cornia.
Corona.
I like the beer. I should, yeah. From 2003 to 2014. You can't hold a job, huh? So whereas, oh, against the wound it. I know, I can feel the chill. So whereas Bishop Kevin Sweeney was named by Bishop Nicholas Damasio as a vocation director from 2004, 2010. During this time, he also served as first director of St. Pope John Paul II, House of Discernment and Parish in Sunset Park, Brooklyn, where he served for 10 years. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board by the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners that hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Bishop Kevin Sweeney for his significant contributions he has made to the county in Passaic and to the community. It's my favorite line here. It's like the Wizard of Oz. Be it further proclaimed that this board congratulates Bishop Kevin Sweeney for being named 2023 Irishman of the Year for this county of Passaic. Thank you, Bishop. We get a picture with everyone. Did I mention that the bishop is an avid Met fan?
Ain't no.
Oh, oh, again. It's all yours, Bishop.
Thank you very much, Terry, and thank you to the Commissioners. And once again, let's say thank you for the beautiful song, "Wild Colonial Boy." Just really to say thank you and to let you know, I'm feeling very much at home here in Passaic County in our diocese of Patterson, which takes up Passaic, Morris, and Sussex Counties. Having been born and raised in Queens, New York, and serving as a priest, as you heard, in parishes in Brooklyn and Queens, the Brooklyn Diocese, I feel very much at home, especially here in Passaic County. Morris and Sussex have been taking a little bit more getting used to for a city kid. But living the city of Patterson and Passaic remind me very much of Brooklyn and Queens. And just to say, you know, my parents, I believe, looking down from heaven, would be smiling at this time because my father loved Ireland so much. My mom did as well. My mom came here to this country in 1951, my dad in 1963. My dad, just a few days before President Kennedy was assassinated. As I was growing up, I knew my parents were from Ireland. I didn't really know what that meant. My first real memory of being Irish was the only day we were allowed to take off from school was St. Patrick's Day because we had to march in the parade. And I guess my father, when we weren't crazy about going to the parade, tried to make it a little bit better because he took us to McDonald's for green milkshakes that they gave on St. Patrick's Day. So, but as I grew up and started to appreciate a little bit more what I had received from my parents and from the people of Ireland, my grandparents, my parents were each one of eight siblings, going up on farms with very little materially. But three gifts that we receive as human beings, as members of the human family, that the people of Ireland received in their own way, and the beauty of culture and our human family, different languages, histories, experiences. But the people of Ireland received and have passed on those three beautiful gifts of faith, family, and also education. I give thanks to God for my faith, which my parents received from their parents and from the saint that we'll be celebrating on Friday, St. Patrick. And the importance of the gift of family, as we are who we are, so many of us, because of our parents. And my parents worked and sacrificed for my brother and my sister and I, growing up. And education, they gave us a Catholic education. I didn't appreciate it all in grammar school, high school. But as I got to college and started to think about things a little bit more, I realized how blessed I was to receive all that I had received from my parents. And maybe finally, you know, I grew up on a block in Queens with, again, kids from different places and families from, and as I got to know the boroughs of Brooklyn and Queens, especially in New York City, the beauty of, we had a bishop, the one who, or Damien used to like to say, "The whole world is in Brooklyn and Queens," because the gift of diversity, which is very much here in the city of Patterson, in our county of Passaic, and how we need to appreciate that and recognizing, coming to understand that I was a son of immigrants and how my father loved the country where he was born. He came to love this country. I can still remember him as a kid, when people would come visit from Ireland, and how he would speak about this country and the opportunities that are given. We thank our public servants who sacrifice and get so much thanks for what you do, right? And not always. But we need to give thanks for all that we have in this country that has received immigrants from all over the world and continues to do so. As I came to know, especially the Hispanic communities in Brooklyn and Queens, and now here in our diocese, and the recent immigrants who have come to us. Sadly, not everyone appreciates who we are as this United States of America and how much we have received and how we need to continue to receive those who come to us. And I've been received by a wonderful welcoming committee here in our diocese. Duffy, Murphy, and Ryan, Father Patrick Ryan, Peter Murphy, and Terry have been three of so many who made me feel at home. And I feel very much a Pattersonian, a member of Passaic County. And this is a tremendous honor. And so I thank you very much, and you're in my prayers, especially those in public service, and each one of you. And happy St. Patrick's Day. Thanks so much. Thanks so much.
Send him a picture with us. Father, coming up. I mentioned that Duffy's gonna be open.
Thanks very much.
Come on, Cindy, get in the middle. Come on, Cindy. Let me see if I can get my hand. Thank you. That concludes our celebration of Irish heritage. See you next year. But let me ask you, 365 days a week, we're open. Yes, please take soda bread. Bake it myself.
He spent all night, he spent all night baking it. I don't know, it's on there on the wrapper. No, we're.
Who makes it? Would they say made it really good, soda bread? Go, Bill.
Terry, that was terrific, as always. Now, you mentioned the name of a tavern in Patterson, but I didn't get the name or the address. Could you say that again? Open seven days, but.
And I was drinking heavily.
And is this tavern that you've, that you're talking about doing anything special for St. Patrick's Day?
A little bit, yeah, we'll close early, I think, you know.
Okay, no, that's good.
We do have Family Day, which have children on Sunday, and the Irish Step Dancers are in, so very calm, 1 o'clock to about 4 o'clock. It's very nice with all the kids and running around, so it's a great day. And all my grandchildren will be there.
All right. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, John, for the plug. It's not gonna get you anything, though.
I'm a regular there for St. Patrick's. I bring my son when he went.
When you first came aboard, you.
Taught me my lesson.
I tortured you.
Those of you who weren't here, I wasn't paying attention to the calendar. I wore an orange tie my first year for Irish Heritage Month.
He paid for it.
He still remembers. But we're both still here. So let's, we're gonna move on on our agenda to item F, which is the approval of the minutes of our February 28 meeting. Can I have a motion in a second?
Make that motion.
County Commissioners Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Stane.
James.
Yes.
Lazar.
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes. Can I have a motion on G for approval of proclamations?
Move it.
Second.
County Commissioners Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lazar.
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes. Do you administrate your report? Matt, you have anything for us?
I just want to note, Commissioner, we are, for your consideration, adopting the 2023 Passaic County budget, seventh year with no increase in the tax rate, fifth year, no increase in the tax levy. I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize our county auditor, Steve Wilcox, our CFO, Rich Cahill, all the department heads who have made that happen, and the fiscal conservative board that has been a steward of Passaic County tax dollars. Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Matt. Do we need to hear from, you were rich?
You want Steve to sing an Irish song, or?
I really don't. I know better than that. But seriously, gentlemen, thank you very much for your hard work. And Matt, to your knowledge, has any county in New Jersey ever gone five years without a tax increase?
I might need Steve for that one.
I think so, too. Let's go with no. All right. Which brings us to our, that was everything from you, Matt?
That was everything, too. And Commissioner Duffy, great, great job. I'm sure my Irish grandmother.
Nice tie, by the way. I like his tie.
For those of you following along at home, that brings us to item I, Budget Matters, which is a little bit extra complicated. As my colleagues up here know, there's a minor amendment that we have to make to the budget as it was provided in connection with the minutes that were circulated last Friday. So I'm gonna do my best to wade through this. And we begin with a motion to suspend the regular order of business.
I'll move it.
Second.
County Commissioners Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Lazar.
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes. And a motion to open the public hearing on the 2023 cap resolution adopted on first reading on February 14th.
Make that motion.
Second.
County Commissioners Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Lazar. Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes. Does anyone present desire to be heard on the 2023 cap resolution?
Seeing no one at the podium, I move to close public portion.
I'll second.
County Commissioners Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Lazar. Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes. Okay, that, can I have a motion for final adoption of the cap resolution to exceed index rate?
I'll move it.
Second.
County Commissioners Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
No.
James.
Lazar.
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes. Can I have a motion to open the hearing on the introduced 2023 budget?
Move it.
Second.
County Commissioners Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Lazar.
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes. Does anyone present desire to be heard on the 2023 Passaic County budget?
Seeing no one at the podium, I move to close public portion.
Somebody second that, please.
I'll second.
There's not many of us here, so a little more participation.
County Commissioners Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Lazar. Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes. I was thanking our team here. I should also, of course, thank the guy in whose chair I am sitting today, Pat Lepore, Director Lepore, who is so part, so much part of the budget as we go through it each year. With that, can I have a motion to add the resolution to amend the 2023 budget to the agenda?
I'll move it.
Second.
County Commissioners Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
No.
James.
Yes.
Lazar.
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes. And I have a motion to amend the 2023 budget with the attached resolution.
I'll move it.
Second.
County Commissioners Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo. James.
Lazar. Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes. Lou, is adopt the attached amending resolution, is that a separate motion or is that just the vote that we just took?
That was, it was, it was a vote to, that is true.
I need to, do I need to call a vote on that line item?
Yeah, let's, like, because I didn't make that completely clear. I apologize. Yes, it should be a motion to adopt the, let's do that.
Okay. Motion to adopt. So this is sort of a repeat of what we just did, but let's, may I have a motion to adopt the attached amending resolution to the 2023 budget? Thank you.
Move it.
Okay, very good. All right. It was James Lazar. County Commissioners Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
No.
James.
Lazar. Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes. Now, I think we're nearly at the end. May I have a motion to adopt the 2023 budget?
Move it.
Second.
County Commissioners Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
No.
James.
Lazar. Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes. Thank you all. May I have a motion to resume the regular order of business?
I'll move it.
Second.
County Commissioners Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Lazar.
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes. Brings us to county commissioner reports. The director is not here. I just have one quick one, which folks may have seen. This was a $51 million week for Passaic County at NJTPA in Newark. We are receiving two different grants totaling almost $21 million for streetscape improvements in Wayne and in Clifton, which is big news. And in addition, we were able to add $30 million in funding to the bridge project connecting West Milford to Morris County. So that is all federal funding. That's the kind of thing that we're able to do for our constituents without adding to the tax burden, which again was 0% for the fifth run. So it's by going out and getting those, by building the partnerships with our federal legislators, Congressman Gottheimer, Congresswoman Sheryl, Congressman Pescrow, that we're able to do that. So Commissioner Duffy?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Gallo?
Happy St. Patrick's.
I just want to wish everyone healthy and safe, happy Thanksgiving, I mean, Thanksgiving. It's a long way off. Bruce wishes that we were already. Or happy St. Joseph's Day. No, I'm only kidding. Happy St. Patrick's Day.
I was very happy to hear it was after Election Day, so thanks. Listen, you guys, you did a great job. You always do a great job when it comes to the budget. We're very fortunate to have great department heads. We keep saying it at every meeting, but it's the truth. This county runs well really because of the people in the room. So we thank you from the bottom of our hearts. You make our jobs easier. Thank you, all of you.
Commissioner Lazar. Okay, very good. With no communications, that brings us to the oral portion of the meeting. Can I have a motion to open?
I'll move it.
Second.
County Commissioners Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lazar.
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes. This is the oral portion of the meeting. Everyone who wishes to be heard, please approach the podium. You will have three minutes and take note that whatever you have to say will be part of the public record. We'd ask you to begin.
Seeing no one at the podium, I move to close public portion. Oh, I'm sorry.
You gotta be quick here.
You gotta be quick, because, you know, Terry.
Yeah, you know.
Hold on just a second, get the podium turned around for you.
Give me one second.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And good evening. My name's Scott Nader, Southern Valley Drive, Woodland Park, New Jersey. I am, first, I was just gonna say I was a lifelong resident of Passaic County, but after hearing so many good presentations tonight, not only am I, I was born and raised in Passaic County, graduated from Passaic County Community College, worked my entire adult life in Passaic County, married my wife from Passaic County, married her in Passaic County, had my children in Passaic County, raised them in Passaic County, they go to school in Passaic County. I've been in Passaic County for a long time, had the opportunity and part of my adult life, I was in public service for a long time and still am. I was fortunate enough to become an employee of Passaic County in June of 2017, and I just left at the end of calendar year 2022. I wish I could say, scratch that please verse from the record, I want to say that my time there for five and a half plus years was great. However, my last three months since I left has not been so great. Just trying to finalize my final compensation that was due overtime, comp time. It's been an arduous back and forth, emails, phone calls. I spoke to Mr. Jordan once. I really want to say and put a stamp on it, my time in Passaic County has been great. I love it, Passaic County. Like I just explained my background, you know, I go to church in Passaic County, our diocese is here, I was, I was baptized in Passaic County, I was confirmed. My children were baptized, confirmed in Passaic County, you know, so I'm proud of Passaic County. And I try to correct people that don't pronounce the word correctly. Being born and raised in Passaic, Passaic County, it's kind of in my blood a little bit. So I would just urge, please, if I could, I would really like to put a stamp on the fact that I was proud and I had a great time as an employee of Passaic County. And if I could just have this matter to be rectified and closed and moved into that check column as completed, I would really appreciate it. And I appreciate your time and I wish you all the best. And even though I'm not wearing green, because I came from a previous engagement and responsibility, I have green on my heart, so happy St. Patrick's Day to everybody. Thank you very much for your time.
Seeing no one.
I'm just thinking about this gentleman here. Seeing no one at the podium, I move to close public portion.
County Commissioners Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lazar.
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes. Just kind of thank you for bringing that to our attention. It's obviously as a personal matter, something we would talk about here, but we appreciate your being here and you certainly proved your Passaic County bona fides.
And thank you. I do have an answer for you. If you just, like the commissioner said, we don't want to discuss a personal matter in a session. If you just wait for me after the meeting, we can talk.
I appreciate it.
All right. That brings us to our consent agenda, M1 through M53. Counsel, any late starters?
No, no late starters. I just want to point out resolution number 46. There is a typographical error on the seventh paragraph. It should be July 1st, 2022 to June 8th, 30th, 2023.
Okay, so that's just a typo in the year 2022 and 2023. And that doesn't need to be, there's no formal amendment, that's just can be corrected in the record?
Yes.
Any need for close session?
No need, of course.
To my colleagues, of the items on the consent agenda, not the one that's already been removed, but of M1 through M53, does anyone want anything pulled off and voted separately?
Well, there's one here, 230273, came out of Planning Economic.
Yes, that's already separate.
It's separate.
We will, that's already on the agenda, that'll be N1. Thank you. Any others from M1 through 53? All right, can I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I'll move it.
Second.
County Commissioners Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lazar.
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes. So that brings us to N1, that is the item that was removed from the consent agenda. Can I have a motion and a second on N1?
Second.
I don't.
We're voting on this now?
We're gonna, we're gonna vote on it now.
Okay, all right.
I'll second it.
I need, well, we don't have a motion yet.
We're gonna vote on it separately, correct?
Yes, that's, that's what we're, that's what we're doing right now.
Waiting for me to vote?
No. No, I need, I'm waiting for a motion.
He can actually make the motion if he's not.
So somebody else make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
All right, okay. Lazar, and then seconded by James. All right, roll call.
County Commissioners Duffy.
Yes.
No.
Oh, you, we're voting now for this. No, emphatically no. And I just want to say, at the last meeting, this was on the agenda. And I want to say kudos to my partners up here. I was very proud of how that went. I understand powers to be. The way you vote is the powers to be. It's not my, you know, I didn't make up the rules, although those are sordid rules as far as I'm concerned. This person should be never in a position of any kind of judgment or power, never. And he's demonstrated that to me personally. And I feel very strongly that this person should not be permitted to do. But I'm only one, and I feel very strongly, anybody I'd like to know why, I have no problem explaining it. None. I can't tell you the rage to have it a second time around. I vote emphatically no. Man should never be in power, ever.
Gallo.
Disgusting.
No. James?
I'm gonna vote yes.
Lazar?
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet?
Yes.
And I understand why. Hold your head up. I have no problem with that. None. I understand.
That brings us to O, new business. Any motion on personnel?
Move the personnel.
Second.
County Commissioners Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lazar.
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes. Bills?
The bills list.
I'm seconding it.
County Commissioners Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lazar.
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes. And any motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Please take home some soda bread. Take some. It was, we baked that at Corner First and River Street, Patterson.
County Commissioners Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lazar.
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes. Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Happy St. Patty's Day.